Okay, it's six o'clock. I'm gonna call this regular session meeting at the township trustees. Order for our business pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under government, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, um, starting with our meeting minutes, do I have a motion to approve your session minutes of February the nineteenth?
I like that motion.
Second.
Both?
Yes.
Um. We didn't have a special meeting on that twenty eighth.
Correct.
That's. It's still on there from when I thought there would be one, but that was not.
No.
There's a task to see if we're paying attention.
Right. Um. And can share side here, uh, both side.
Nothing to report.
Uh, do we have any news on, uh, the, um?
Golf?
Yeah, the net.
We have a variance hearing on next Monday.
Okay, okay. Uh, word nails?
Uh, no report.
F R rebel?
Um. Yeah, we're good.
Okay, zoning?
Um, just under the old business that, uh, variance hearing on the fence for both side will be Monday. And our new zoning guy will start tomorrow. Um, road department. Um, let's see, hopefully we won't have any more snow events. Um.
Now you said that.
Yeah, uh, salt barn, uh, it took nine forty eleven, but. Um, we just got word from, uh, Eric that, uh, he, he needs to wait for good weather for, it has to be over forty-five degrees, I think, for five days in a row for the epoxy to seal. So soon as he gets the weather, he said he's ready to go.
Did he put the gates on over again?
Nah, he said it was going to, but he did. We'll see epoxy before we fix those. Because, yeah, they actually have to cut those out. They have to groove them a little bit so they have some depth of epoxy in there. And then there's then evolve the painting. Yes, he's not happy about the painting piece.
Let me ask you, I mean, last word you heard, you and I had a conversation. We want to paint the three sides. CEO only wants to paint one side.
He wants to paint to one side. I, I mean, it's been made clear to him that the board wants the whole thing to look consistent and uniform, and it's all gonna be painted. But yeah, and we have his money, so if he doesn't paint it, we'll hire somebody to paint it.
Yeah. Uh, hey, I'm gonna, I'm gonna drop down, cause, um, I'm gonna drop down to the administrator. I'm gonna hold that Franklin County resurfacing estimate.
Sure.
Um, I wanna drop down to administrator, and then we can go through that if you're okay with it. Um, but holding the guest speaker of, you wanna do these, the limited home rule resolution and that?
Yes, we can do this.
Yeah.
We'll get that out. So there's, uh, because we are a limited home rule township, we're required to have a law director by statute. Um, and the prosecutor, currently we have an agreement with the former prosecutor. Uh, the minister, our administrator now has an agreement before you, I believe, with the new, new county prosecutor. Uh, and we would have to implement this agreement by limited home rule resolution, which is that we will ask you to ask this evening. Um. And Mr. Chairman, I move to, uh, prove resolution appointing chair of favor Franklin County Prosecutor Law Director dispensing with second reading and declaring an emergency. I submerge.
Uh, second vote?
Yeah, yes.
Yes. Yeah. Um. Also, we have to rescind a resolution, uh, one oh two dash two five. Um, so I move to rescind the resolution that, uh, of one oh two dash two five. I submerge.
Second.
Vote?
Yeah.
Yes. Um. Let me, you wanna take, wanna take, uh?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, now we need to, uh, I, um, move that we approve the limited home rule resolution, agreeing to and approving a master agreement with Delaware County to implement a sewer arrangement with said entity.
Uh, second.
Sorry.
Okay.
And that resolution should thus approves the Perry Township Delaware County Sewer Development Agreement and dispensing with second reading and declaring emergency.
Second. Vote?
Yes.
Yes. Um. Again, and then you're moving this reschedule to March seventeenth, or?
Yeah, you need a motion.
Okay, so I moved to reschedule the March seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five regular meeting to March nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five at six P M. So, both.
Second.
Vote?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, um, I'm gonna keep everybody in their toes. Um, you guys wanna, we'll get you guys out and get you out of here.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. You moved something off?
So you, you need to sign that.
Yeah.
Show us this information.
Thank you.
We want everybody to have.
Nice.
All right, wanted to take the opportunity to kind of level set. I know that you've had some employee changes. Wanted to make sure that everybody had eyes on the current vendors for two thousand twenty-five. Justin and I wanted to take an opportunity as well. We got some information back on the market review. Um, we went over this, I think John Chet Michelle heard this, but we did get information back from the Anthem MEW. Um, they quoted us at a five point one percent reduction in current rates from MMO. I did also want to bring up that the O B C, we did get some preliminary information back from the board. Unfortunately, it does not look good. It looks like four out of the five members will be leaning towards a no. Doesn't mean that we're out yet, but I think it's kind of showing what that's gonna look like once the board actually goes on that. So I wanted to have a discussion with everybody here on what the plan is moving forward. If we're not getting into the O B C on five one, that we are looking at Anthem. So Justin and I's recommendation along with Steven would be that we move to the Anthem MEW for that reduction in premium. It's a thirty-four thousand, two hundred nineteen dollar savings over the year.
Also extend your rates to not renew again until May first of two thousand twenty-six.
That thirty-four thousand is that for twelve months then from May to May?
Right, yeah, May to May.
But the thirty-four thousand also, we have to consider the fact that there's a little more H R A risk, right? So, so literally split that, and we're looking at roughly a thirty thousand dollar savings.
So do we know why Jeff, why we're gonna, like, why they're not voting for us?
We'll get more information after the board votes on it. Um, I think the memory talks initially when we discussed with Sarah, so the person that works for my goal and brave vendor who communicates with the O B C is there's some high cost climates currently on the plan that are giving them pause to accept considering how much premium is being paid that it offsets with all the claims.
Okay.
And that's what we're told. Now, we'll get into the weeds. I think they'll send us some information back on the reason for you not getting in, and we can discuss that further as to why.
Okay.
Can we have a, once that information, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry.
Once that information is provided to you.
Yes.
That debriefing information, could we then arrange to have a conversation amongst the board and you and kind of go over? Here are the reasons why, and what is the strategy moving forward? We ultimately, our goal is to get into the consortium.
Yep.
If we can all agree on that. How we get there is, is what we're gonna depend upon you to tell us what the options are available to us to do X, Y, and Z on our end, whatever obviously that we have within our control to do that.
Of course. Justin and I have had preliminary discussions on some aggressive outside the box thought processes on how we can do that, but until we get the information back and we know exactly what we're working with, it's not really a point to talk about that yet until we know for sure.
Understanding what you exactly just said there, I, I know, and not wanting to go into too much specifics right now.
Yeah.
Um, I know before there had been a thought that a particular scenario might be, um, a negative from their perspective, but that the cost of that particular treatment was really outside of it, and then it was covered by, can't recall, but some, you know, some outside program or discounting, yeah.
Basically, yes.
Is.
Yeah. And I think there's a, there's a portion of the, that is at play, but not a big.
But that's not the entire thing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Not a big enough portion for them to feel good about, you know, i- in their, in their mind, and like Mike said, once we get a full debris, we'll be able to fill you all in in more detail, but their, their worry is that the claims would be higher than the, the premium that would be coming in, which is a reasonable worry. But, but what, what can we do to you all's point in the future to get us to a point where that's an option? And it just because it's a no now doesn't mean it's a never.
Correct.
And that, that, to chat's point, I think that it's a really good goal to get in that consortium, and then that would be a great long-term place to be with low single-digit renewals year over year once you're in, because once you're in, they're not, they're, they're not gonna kick you out, so.
But we're certain that that particular scenario that we were just discussing, they're, they're informed that that's offset.
They are, yes, we went length, and Justin did a great job of explaining what that looks like.
Yes, yeah, good question.
Is Anthem higher than their original?
Yes, they are.
How much?
Only by, if going off your rates from previous. So you guys got your increase at January first, twenty twenty-five.
Right.
Anthem had come in at a fifteen percent above spirit. This is seventeen percent above those previous rates. So it's five percent below your current rates, but it's all, you know.
It's two, it's two percent higher than.
Yeah, it's like two point two percent or I forget.
You're getting an extra five months of basically not having a renewal. So their thought process is a very typical thing that we see when this happens is, you know, you had a renewal offer at January first, twenty twenty-five that would have expired, or.
We didn't take it, so.
Yeah, and, and then your next renewal would have been January first, twenty twenty-six. So that four months of healthcare inflation, so to speak, is what they're building into, a two, extra two percent. And then on the, on the backside, you'll get an extra four months of, of rate lock and guarantee. So we can definitely go back to them and attempt to, but then we don't have a ton of leverage, unfortunately, so.
We are where we are.
You are where you are.
Yeah, work with what's been given to us. So again, our recommendation is to make that switch, but it's obviously up to the board. And that doesn't need to be done right this second. Obviously, we'll probably wait until formal information comes from the O B C before you make that decision to make a switch.
We've had a timeline in here to, to talk through that. Maybe you make sense of what they're just.
Might as well, yeah, have the discussion while we're doing it.
Yeah, in case, if that's the decision the board makes, I'll let Mike go through the timeline.
Yeah, so Stephen and I went over this to make sure that we're on the same page. So if we're meeting with you today, open enrollment communications to employees for best case scenario would be on March seventeenth. We would probably shoot for open enrollment, March twenty, we can, March twenty-fourth. That way we can submit everything for the open enrollment elections on March thirty-first. In order to get into MEW, there needs to be proof of chamber membership. So I, you guys are part of, um, is it Franklin County?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, yeah. So we just need to submit documentation that, because that's what the, the MEW requires. Uh, employer applications and banking forms need to be sent to Anthem, so we're, we're targeting April eleventh for that. Um, this will give us plenty of time for, all right, I D cards to be available to employees and in hands by May first. And then there will be a deductible credit coming from MMO to Anthem to offset what we've had through the first four or five months. Now, there is a caveat to that.
The deductibles will still run on a calendar year, so you'll still run from a January to a, a January from a deductible standpoint. Your, the rates will renew at five one each year. So that gets a little confusing because, you know, that, we have many clients that renew at all different times throughout the year. So it's not uncommon, but it is just something that, that despite the renewal date, when your premium costs change, your, um, deductibles still run and accumulate on a calendar year basis. So anything, anything that people have used from now until, uh, May first, if we were to change, we would get a report of that, supply that to Anthem, and they would apply that deductible credit to everybody's accounts.
Will, will the employees actually see that, or is that in the, on the backside of the thing? I mean, in their head?
Yeah.
Deductibles are run on an annual basis, anywhere to December anyway.
Yeah, so they, they won't see anything from that perspective, no. In the, in, in this transition timeframe, we'll get more clarity as we come to a decision on, you know, what does that actually look like for the employees? I'd imagine that there's probably a, a small overlap there where, you know, we would advise employees that, that they might get an E O B even though they've already hit their deductible that says they have member cost share in that month of May. If they just hold off for a month, then that'll be incumbent upon us in our communication that once Ju- once June hits, that'll all be wiped out based on what they've already paid throughout the rest, beginning of the year. And all things that we will communicate to the workforce through that open enrollment process, another opportunity to, for folks to come on to or off to plan. So.
So all the, I'm sorry, so the open enrollment communicate, and I should, we should talk about this earlier.
It's, it's okay.
Um, the communication that you want to go out to the employees is for open enrollment, that's something you'll produce for us to look at and then?
Yes, yeah, much like, much like the process we just went.
We just went through.
Okay.
For anybody.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Any questions on that timeline?
Well, Chuck, the other thing we need to talk about is the H R A administrator, and I'll let you take that away.
Yes. Yeah. We're, we're moving, okay? That H R A administrator is horrible. Um, we, 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 we promised the employees, I'm sorry, I promised, okay, leave, leave it on me, that we would not see a difference. And obviously, we have seen a difference in the H R A administrator, the process in which they use. We were used to them have duplicate, uh,
E O Bs.
And so that they could see it on their end, and they had a portable portal to, uh, MMO. Um, obviously, this H R administrator did not have that same kind of line of communication. Uh, and then they wanted to charge us. Which didn't make any sense whatsoever. They could do it, but they didn't want to do it, and then they wanted to charge us. So I think we've had nothing but poor service from them, whether it's the billing part or whatever it is. We need to get back to a level of service and, uh, expect what we expect from them. Um, as what we were used to last year. And so I know they have, we've asked them to come up with a recommendation with another H R A administrator. I want them to talk about that particular company experience that they've had, but also a timeline and what we would need to do if we were to move away from, um, our current H R A administrator.
Correct. So E B C requires a sixty-day written notice from the employee to terminate. So I was hoping if you guys do have that decision made this evening, we can get that written and pushed through. Um, there's a minimal fee should we terminate prior to that or want to get out and move to a new one, it's three hundred and twenty dollars. But I think we're gonna need the time to install the new one anyway. Um, Ameriflex is a company that we've worked for or worked with, especially in our office. We have several account managers who use them. The reason we are looking at them is they have that new proprietary software that they launched in two thousand twenty-four, which is exactly what you guys are looking for. It's auto adjudication on the E O Bs that runs through the card. So all approved expenses are done on the back end. The employees don't have to wait for an E O B. They don't have to search for it. They make their payment on approved expense, and they move on to the next one. So that's what we're trying to accomplish, is to get you back to a level set where you were prior to making the change to E B C.
And just, uh, just to, to remind everybody in background too, and we take some responsibility for that too, because it's, it's uncommon for this, what Ameriflex is able to do in, in your group size space. And it wasn't something that was available just last year at the time that we implemented four groups of your size. It now is with Ameriflex, which is good news. They'd always been able to do it on, with larger groups. Um, and we didn't ask the question to know that those E O Bs were being automatically sent over, so we take some responsibility there too, not all.
I, so I didn't lay that, I just made an assumption.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, well, again, communication, but we understand the problem, and our job is to move forward and fix it. So this is what we would like to implement moving forward. The cost is identical to what is currently being paid per employee with E B C. And you do get that added benefit of having those auto ju- auto adjudications. Uh, the only difference is E B C didn't require a setup fee, and they did not have an annual enrollment fee, which I put both on there. So initial setup fee is four hundred, and then once a year, it's a hundred and twenty-five dollars for administrative fee.
But you only pay this four hundred once?
Correct, that's the setup fee.
So do we wanna look at making this switch at the same time that we?
That is.
The switch.
That would be our recommendation. I just, if we're going through a change, then I think we'll be able, yeah. And let me put it this way too. So we did have some discussions with E B C prior to onboarding. But as Chuck and I talked, we would like to involve everybody in this process as much as we can, so there's some familiarity from the township along with Ameriflex. We make sure that everybody gets along, and we understand it before we make a decision. So I spoke with the account rep this evening. There's a lot of good information on how quickly we can install this, quicker than what we dealt with with E B C, that I would like to set up a call with Fadi and the team and everybody who would like to attend that. That way we can answer questions. Everybody can be on the same page for the transition, and we know exactly what we're gonna involve them before we make that decision.
And Fadi is the representative at Ameriflex.
Yeah.
So the vice president says.
That's your recommendation.
That's my recommendation. That's Justin's, that's Steven's as well, because Steven works with Ameriflex right now.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we, um, plus my, my train of thought.
Change?
Switch?
We, yes.
I see, see, hate E B C so much.
If we move from, uh.
The company that shall not be named.
Yeah, correct. Like the team up north.
Uh, from our current H R A administrator to our, to a new administrator, uh, Ameriflex. I submerge.
Uh, second.
Vote?
Yes.
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 Okay.
That wasn't very foul. Wow, we're.
You're, you're, you've been thinking of E B C this whole time, and it's just destroying your thought process, I understand, but that's the plan. So my next step is I'll reach out to Fadi tomorrow, check everybody's calendar, put something together, and then we'll have a conversation about what that installation timeframe looks like, and then we will need from you to do it.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Now, when, when do you think that you'll get feedback from the consortium?
Our deadline was?
That within the next week or two.
Yeah.
Okay.
Shouldn't be, shouldn't be very long at all here.
Okay, so is that a, is it an opportunity to do both conversation about H R A administrator and, I'm sorry, and the debrief on that, or is that not gonna?
We can, we can, if we have like some time on the tail end of our H R A conversation.
Yeah.
We can debrief on that quickly.
Okay.
I think.
Yeah.
Let, let Ameriflex go off the call, and we can hang out.
As we make that call in this transition to, uh, Ameriflex, I would like to have the department heads to be a part of that. So we have a line of communication right to the troops.
Absolutely.
Against it.
Yeah, yeah, I wanna make sure everybody's on the same page this time, so we know when there's.
Take your picture.
Foundation.
Huh? I said we'd take your picture down to locker room now.
Oh, my God.
Yeah.
I'm gonna get that knife out of the door, don't care.
Anything else, anything else?
Not from our end, no.
From us, anything you need from us, and if any questions arise, you have our contact information as you guys are thinking through whether to make the move or not on the Anthem side, so.
Okay.
We appreciate the communication.
Yeah.
Yeah, of course. Thank you all. Appreciate you, appreciate the partnership.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're a pleasure. I'll just take this to the shredder, Chuck.
Oh, okay.
Nice, I got it. It still needs to be done on the back end, so I'll make sure it's taken care of.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Have a good night.
See you, guys.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, let's go back up to Franklin County Resurfacing Estimate.
Uh, so Mr. Chairman, while the administrator gets his thoughts in, in order, um, the road superintendent and I had, uh, with, uh, with the administrator had a conversation with Franklin County Engineers Office. Uh, present was, uh, Deputy, uh, County Engineer, um, Brad Foster, thank you.
You're doing great.
Um, and, and Michael, I can't remember Mike's last name, but he's with their construction. He's with the Mike Mull, or Mark Mullinex Group, uh, that does the resurfacing program. And so our question was, was that we applied basically for a grant that, um, was, you might notes out in here. I get my spreadsheet. We got applied for and received a O P W C grant for nine hundred fifty-four thousand, four hundred twenty-five dollars. Um. The estimate that came in, although it felt like it kept going up and up and up each time we had this conversation, even within the conversation.
Oh.
Um, was a figure of one point three five seven million dollars. Basically, four hundred two thousand, eight hundred twenty-four dollars more than what the grant would pay for. Now, let's say that this particular estimate that was done by the resurfacing program, you know, Mark Mullinex, who does our program every year, he is, uh, always on the high end. Okay, very conservative, which I like in this case, because I wanna know my first case exposure. So we're four hundred two thousand, eight hundred twenty-four dollars short. We had anticipated utilizing, and the board approved a hundred eighty thousand dollars rounded up, uh, as local match. And so, um.
Which is one year, which is equal to the amount of one year, what, what we would be spending on roadwork this year?
So what we said is that we spend somewhere between two hundred and twenty and two hundred and forty thousand a year on roadwork. Okay, so if we were to take the difference of the one eighty and the two twenty, that's forty, and we were to take all the concrete, this, we were just thinking of a solution here.
I'm just following on.
And we take the fifty thousand that we allocate every year for concrete, so that's an additional ninety thousand dollars. We are still short about a hundred seventy-nine thousand dollars. Somewhere. Now, that's if that, that estimate comes in high. So we, we said to them, go ahead, because I think March fourth was their deadline to go out for bid. They needed to know these numbers. Um, otherwise they'd have to change the bid package for the entire town. We said, go ahead and bid it out. Let's see if the numbers hold true, or maybe they come in less. Now, they did show us figures of other bids and other projects all the way from ODOT to their own that would indicate that their numbers, this, this number that Mark Mullinex is coming up with, this one point three, is high. We don't know that for sure, and we won't know that until April the eleventh, which is the opening of the bid, bids. In the meantime, we've gotta figure out who's gonna come up with this other hundred seventy-nine thousand dollars. And I'm gonna tell you, they ain't gonna be us, because we didn't come up with these numbers. Now, we, if we would have known that, we could have applied for more, didn't mean that we would have got it. We could have applied for more, and it could have scored us differently. Whatever. The point is, is that we weren't given the right numbers. Now, the people who wrote the grant worked for Franklin County Engineers Office, and for some reason, they don't talk. They just, for some, internally. It doesn't surprise me that that happens. Um, but I would think that I would use my own internal estimators to say, hey, what is this project gonna cost us? And so we weren't there to throw anybody under the bus, we're, we're there to be accusatory. But we did wanna try and understand some of the things and why that was so much more. Some of the things was fiber mat. They didn't include fiber mat in there. Included their own, okay?
All those in the letter.
All those in the letter. They didn't include topsoil, seeding and mulch. Okay, the fiber mat was a, was a hundred and twenty-five. The topsoil was another thirty-five. The seeding was another ten thousand. And they didn't include, uh, bonding and, uh, M O T, which is mobilization of equipment. That's another twenty thousand. So be honest with you, that all comes up to about one hundred ninety-one thousand dollars. Now, that's on them, that they didn't include that in our grant proposal. But on the other hand, they did write the grant for us, okay? They just screwed up. So what I wanna. They just screwed up, so what I wanna get from the county engineer, and we have launched. County engineer and who else, who, somebody else, anyway, the county engineer. Um, and Brad, I'm sorry, uh, early in February, April, before the bids are open. To basically say, you need to, you need to cover this. Whatever this more is, in the worst case scenario for you is a hundred seventy nine thousand dollars. If it comes in less.
One seventy nine includes the fiber mat and all that kinda stuff?
Yes. Yes, the one point three covers everything and the kitchen sink. So. That's, that's my, my problem now, so. Oh, nevermind, so we're. Okay, so. So I'll watch my language, so my point is, is that. We will do a little homework. We'll be going around talking to a few people before I have that lunch, because I wanna know where all the money is. Where they could take the money from. So I wanna go into that meeting saying, I want this hundred seventy nine thousand if it goes high and you can take it from these funds. Cause the worst, I I don't want anybody ever telling me, we can't do something. I'm gonna guarantee you, in government, you can always do something. You can always solve the problem, it's whether you want to solve the problem. And so I need to answer before I ask the question.
Isn't, aren't you usually about, isn't that bid usual, or that number usually about ten percent higher?
I was thinking, yeah.
For some, for some reason, I think it's about ten percent. This could be a forty thousand dollar question rather than.
Correct.
Hundred seventy nine thousand.
Or it could be nothing.
Right.
So the way.
That's the absolute worst case scenario.
It's a worst case.
And I don't think we've ever hit the worst case scenario.
No, we haven't, but that's, but it is our exposure right now.
Right. I, oh, I get that.
I, but, alright, if bids come back and they skyrocket, you know, say Mark is underbid it. Like, we don't need to, like, we can say, we're out, we're gonna lose the, we're gonna lose it, right?
Lose the million.
You lose the million dollars.
Right.
But you don't, you don't wanna leave a million, the dollars on the table.
No, but that represents about five, if if we spend two hundred thousand, it's represents five years of roadwork. Five years of roadwork, so here's the way I look at it. It's most likely gonna come down, cause Mark has a, has a history of bidding high. My question is like, hey, they pitch in, great, but my experience is stuff like this gets missed. I mean, it's construction, it's not, you know, so, but if they're willing to pitch in and do whatever. Great, that's, that's, but my thing is, we just don't do roadwork next year in twenty twenty.
And that, that is an option in twenty twenty six, that is an option.
Yeah, I mean, it's like, okay, we're, I mean, it's like what I would say is, hey, we're doing five years of work. And we're only taking, you know, we're only doing two years, so I'm.
Great.
I'm okay with going to bid and getting the numbers and seeing where they land and, you know, maybe that number closes, but then. Just don't do roadwork like in the line, we're not, we're not doing.
And they said I could spread this, this hundred seventy nine, we could spread that out over a two year period.
Oh, even better.
So I, I'm.
The fact that they, just basic things like topsoil.
Yeah, that, that one, like, I can get the fiber.
Thousand dollars.
Yeah, I can get the fiber.
The thing that we can get better at is reviewing how these, I mean, it was wonderful that they wrote the grant for us. Reviewing the grant to look for things that. May not have been included.
Yeah, the, the argument, I mean, their argument could simply be. Legitimately, you did review your application, you signed this.
Yeah.
I, I see that argument. I mean, but they do this, they do this every day.
No, I, I get that, I'm not, I'm not taking that.
No, I.
I just mean, so the, the learning for us is on a go forward basis that we need to take another. A more critical eye.
My big thing is when, when they actually do, if they miss the fiber pack map. On the, on the bidding, like they're, like, are they gonna miss it, you know, like, same thing that we dealt with.
Before, yeah.
On circle on the green.
Right.
Like, we have got to make sure that we have it, that Mark knows fully well that we're doing fiber mat. If, like, if everything goes well and we move forward with the project, but then the next thing is making iron. Absolutely, to the squeaker wheel gets degrees, fiber mat, fiber mats, so we don't get all of a sudden.
Fire to put it right, just fiber mess.
Right.
And I think in our conversation.
Streets are all paved with fiber.
Right. And the chairman.
Paves in fiber mat, so it's our new logo.
They, they are, they were very clear that we wanted fiber mat, they did not. Forget our conversation, nor the letter we sent, nor the, the yelling that went on and all that, they got it. Barb was it, Barb Cox, who was the one that, her group that wrote the grant, was never part of that conversation. So, but it was in the letter, I mean, so. It's something that we, we have to keep drilling into them for some reason, you know, for whatever we do with them.
And the problem is there's only two townships that use fiber.
That's true.
So they, when they look at townships, it is a non-fiber mat route. And it's like we don't exist, but we do, we pay and we want it.
Well, that's on the company, because if they're not outselling townships and that, I mean.
It works.
Works. It works.
But that, so that's our exposure, the worst case scenario is we don't do anything in twenty six. The best thing is that the numbers come in lower, the gaps close. And we give them, we either pay a little bit more or we get them to chip in.
My preference is that they chip in because they screwed up. Or that we screwed up.
Right, but I wouldn't say that, like, it's, and it's a hill to die on, you know, like.
No, but it's.
Sure.
Yeah.
That's been.
Totally cool. Uh, but we don't need.
Dog out on Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Do we need a, we don't need a motion or anything, do we? We don't need.
No, 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 not now.
Okay.
Not, not until April, it was figured out.
Okay, alright, I'm gonna go to, um, are we done, any questions? Moving on, fire any mess.
Open report.
For this bourbon.
Don't do no.
Why are you here?
I enjoy the company.
I talked to John on Friday and I said, you know, Steve's been uncharacteristic, characteristically, was quiet. So.
Something about a resolution you passed.
Yeah. Is that, I guess that's all we have to do is pass a resolution every year.
Just a general reminder, we have seven minutes.
Yes, he, he does, he does.
I got it, I'm on it.
I'm, I'm gonna finish the grant, you gotta, cause I gotta ask for conditional approval. For you to do that.
Okay.
Want us to talk about it?
So, did you talk to Tim?
Yes, and he's talking to the superintendent on Wednesday and he makes him have to ask for donation.
There's a.
Get a conditional.
There's a grant for block cameras that pays for three years, I believe it is. And um, we would like to put one at the school, at Worley Hills Elementary in Brookside, but we're, that's pending approval from superintendent.
What, what are these, Steve?
Block cameras. And it's, it's the, but it's pending their approval if they will all, because we have to apply to put them there. Well.
He can walk through it.
No, well, we were.
Oh, you want.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, he.
No, let me explain.
He bit my ear because he knows that I'm.
We have.
Your pro.
We have access to block.
Yeah.
If we don't purchase cameras at some point, they're gonna cut our access to block. They were supposed to cut our access a year ago.
Yeah.
But because we have come across some issues here and there, they have agreed. We actually budgeted for a flock when we sat down and did our letter.
Yeah.
And I realize we're not there yet, but we, the minimum is two, but if we get it paid for for three years under a grant, I'm okay with that. Because that's how we get a lot of information when crimes happen around, in around neighborhoods. We can look for cars, if somebody gets a description of a car, we can pull through that with flock, if we don't have access. Then we have nothing we can do to get that information, so that's why I wanna do the minimum whenever we can to keep our access to.
So.
That's it.
Assuming today's rates, I don't recall the pricing on flock, assuming today's rates, if three years from now, what's our expense?
Um, I think it would be three thousand per camera.
Per year.
Per year, yes. Um, there's a chance it could be twenty five, it used to be twenty five hundred, but then it went up to three thousand. We have switched, in the time we have been dealing with flock, we have switched reps about eight times. And reps, you know, we'll, we'll drop it back to twenty five hundred for you to get you back in. And then somebody, then a new rep comes along and says, ah, we can't do that, we, we only think of three thousand. Yeah, and then, and then our last rep, she said, you know, to get you access to our system and. One of our illustrious lieutenants almost started to say, well, we already have it, and I kicked him, cause it said, they're, they haven't turned it off, we're just gonna leave it the way it is. So, but they keep us there for the time being.
If, if the school district says no to this, we're not applying.
Yeah, if the school district says no, we're not gonna apply.
Understood, I'm just trying to, you know, what it costs.
But in three years.
Because I just have a fee and quill, right, and then somebody will be wanting more.
Well, our, our hope is, no, our hope is that the school district could just keep the cameras and then they pay Chris, Chris Selfs.
Yeah, but it doesn't match up well with lock, we found out. But because blocks proprietary, so you can't get the same information, just a smaller network. There's, I think they're pushing a million cameras right now around the country, so.
Block us?
Yeah, it's crazy, because, you know, a lot of our businesses have bought them, but because they're not in our name, that doesn't count.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't count, because Arlington Point has them. Country clubs have them, triple nine Bethel has them.
Yeah, rightly, their costs should be going down, not up, if they're deploying that many, but.
Yeah.
Really, I think.
So I just want authority for him to, to apply for it.
Sure.
Yeah, it, based on the school saying yes.
Sure.
Do we need a motion for that?
I don't think so.
Okay, okay, yeah, okay.
Good, um, hey, the only, the only question I have is I see him or writing a thing for um. The um Truck Septic D S T facilities and I'm reading in here that we have a drain that is collapsed.
They're gonna fix that, that's part of that bid is for them to come in, clean the drains and fix what's.
So do we, are we? You, you know, they do have the thing where, are they replacing, like digging it up and replacing it, because they have this new cool thing where you can actually line pipes?
I don't, I don't, I don't know what they're doing, and Ian just told me that they would clean what's clogged and fix what's broken.
And, and how is that? Without.
My, my brain is dig it up and replace.
They, they have a.
Is that included in that number though?
Uh, that doesn't look like it's included, this one is like.
Four hundred dollars.
Yeah, I mean.
So that's the cleaning, but there's another bid to, to repair a drain, but that's not here yet.
Well, when we get that repaired, cause I've had this done on mine, cause I had a pipe collapse, like my sewer line under my house going out to the street. And actually, there's this company that puts it, it's literally a sock that they put inside the pipe. So you don't have to dig anything up, you don't have to do anything, they stick this pipe in and it's like, and it hardens and you're good to go.
Otherwise you have to dig up your basement.
Yeah. So the.
I know, I know, like three or four people have done that.
Yeah, it's an inside, outside, huge pipes, little pipes, doesn't matter, it's an awesome system. I would highly recommend we look at that.
Who, what's the company?
Uh, I'll get it, they're out of Zanesville. So before we start digging in, let's, let's look at that, and this goes for all of them, like, if we have pipes that are. You know, cracking, whatever, I mean, this is an awesome system, because it literally lines it and it's an epoxy, so it hardens and.
Dude, if the pipes collapse, I mean, I'm just thinking for a future, like, if the pipes collapse, they can.
Well, I mean, if it's collapsed, but they told me mine was collapsed and. This company came in, they, you know, when they put the camera through.
Right.
I mean, obviously, if it's smashed, they can't go in, but it's.
So, right, in that principle, they would be able to do that for a drain tile too, like.
Absolutely, yeah. Yep.
And then they could do such a thing.
Now you know.
It's gotta be completely cleaned before they do that, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, I had.
Well, I mean, it's a bit.
Had to have people come flush pipes out to the street last year, cause everything was clogged. So from the downspouts and drain tiles to the street.
Yeah.
Luckily, nothing's collapsed, but at some point it'll be.
Well, if, if, did they camera it?
Yeah.
Yeah, if they camera it, we can send it to the company, I, I, whoever used my house, we've been sending to them, they can have a look at it. They can tell you whether or not it's a candidate to do it. So, yeah, it's a solid system. Um, alright, anyway. Um, oh, we got a minute, alright, um, anything else fiscal officer?
Ask a motion for approval of payroll and dispersals.
Make that motion.
Second.
Vote?
Yes.
Yes, uh, we are going into executive session, uh, I knew. Got a new executive session to consider the appointment of a public employee by roll call vote.
Mister English?
Yes.
Mister Rupert?
Yeah.
Mister Chaney?
Yeah.
Yeah.